The meeting is called back to order at 7:02 PM. Please rise and the clerk will lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May I have a motion and a second that the agenda of May 7th, 2019 be approved as submitted? Second. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed, thank you. Reading of notice of annual budget hearing. Okay, alright, now where is it on this? Okay, wait, I've got it. Ladies and gentlemen, as set by statute, it is now time for holding the 2019-2020 Annual Budget Hearing of the Penfield Central School District. My name is Kathryn Dean and I am President of the Penfield School District Board of Education. The vote on the budget and for members of the Board of Education is in two weeks and not at this meeting. The polls will be open on Tuesday, May 21st, 2019, in the high school gym from 6:00 AM until 9:00 PM. The district has continued extended voting hours to make it more convenient for the residents to vote. The notice of annual meeting, budget vote, and election has been duly published according to law in the Daily Record, Rochester Business Journal, and Penfield Post. Affidavits will be filed with the minutes of the meeting. It is customary, however, to read a summary of the notice. The summary is as follows. Notice is hereby given that the annual vote and election will be held at Penfield High School on Tuesday, May 21st, 2019, from 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM Eastern Daylight Time, wherein qualified voters of the district may vote concerning the election of three members of the Board of Education, one budgetary proposition, one bus purchase proposition, and one proposition for capital improvements as follows. Okay. The, um, okay, excuse me. The election of three members to the Board of Education. Barbara Babeyars and John Piper currently hold these seats and there is one vacant seat. The candidates running to fill these seats in ballot order are Barbara Babeyars, Emily Belser, and Kelvin Freeler. The propositions are as follows. Proposition 1 pertains to the appropriation of the necessary funds to meet estimated expenses for the ensuing school year 2019-2020. The proposition to be voted upon states, "Shall the following resolution be adopted to wit: To adopt the annual budget of the school district for the fiscal year 2019-2020 in the amount of $100,733,732, and to authorize the requisite portion thereof to be raised by taxation on the taxable property of the district." Proposition number 2 pertains to the purchase of four 66-passenger-type school buses, three 30-passenger schoo- uh, excuse me, three 30-passenger-type school buses, and one eight-passenger-type school bus. The proposition to be voted upon states, "Shall the following resolution be adopted to wit: Resolved that the Board of Education of the Penfield Central School District is hereby authorized to purchase four 66-passenger-type school buses, three 30-passenger-type school buses, and one eight-passenger-type school bus, and to expend from the capital fund, therefore, a sum not exceeding $730,430, with $480,000 of such costs to be appropriated and expended from the 2019-2020 general fund budget, and to appropriate and expend the balance not to exceed $250,430 from the 2017 School Bus Reserve Fund established pursuant to Section 3651 of the education law." Proposition 3 pertains to capital improvements. The proposition to be voted on states, "Shall the following resolution be adopted to wit: Resolved that the Board of Education of the Penfield Central School District is hereby authorized to undertake certain capital improvements consisting of reconstruction and improvements to existing school buildings and facilities, site improvements, and the acquisition of certain original furnishings, equipment, and apparatus, and other incidental improvements required in connection therewith for such construction and school use, all at an estimated maximum aggregate cost of $7,550,000. And that such costs, or so much thereof as may be necessary, shall be raised by the levy of a tax to be collected in annual installments, with such tax to be offset by state aid available, therefore, and in anticipation of such tax, debt obligations of the school district, as may be necessary, not to exceed $7,550,000, shall be issued." I ha- I have available the complete notice of annual meeting, budget vote, and election as printed in the Daily Record, Rochester Business Journal, and Penfield Post, and will be pleased to show it to anyone who wishes to see it tonight. Now we will have a summary of the budget.
Good evening. So, the, this is the summary of the, our budget, our official budget hearing for the 2019-20 school year. And I'll start off with a couple of slides and I will turn it over to Dr. Sansucci. Just as a reminder, and the board has seen this, but for the community, our motto in the district is building a bright future. And when we talk about the budget, we also like to share, really, at the heart, what gets impacted. And, um, Penfield is a great place. All four of our elementary schools are ranked in the top 12 out of 162 schools in the Rochester area, based on four years of test scores. Bay Trail Middle School is ranked third out of 97 middle schools, and again, on test scores. And Penfield High School was named to Newsweek Magazine's List of America's Best High Schools. The district as a whole ranked fourth out of 67 area school districts in 2018, again, based on test scores. One of the things that, um, all of this leads into, from kindergarten through 12th grade, is that, um, ending of a student's school career, which is around graduation. And so, in, uh, last year, our graduation rate was 96%. The state average is 80%. 92% of our graduates continued on to college, and 96% of our graduates earned a Regents diploma. 77% of those graduates earned an Advanced Designation degree based on additional tests and, um, expectations they need to take care of. 139 high school students, including some of our graduates, were named AP Scholars in 2018. So academically, we're very, very proud as a district of everything that our students accomplish through great partnerships with families and, of course, our dedicated staff at our schools. But, I always like to point out as a district that we're not just about test scores. Our board continues to focus on the development of the whole student. And in 2019, um, Penfield, um, it was voted a best community for music education. 126 students were selected for state and county music festivals. Science Olympiad, our PHS team, earned 48 medals at regionals and four medals at staying competition. Although it's not listed, the board heard a great presentation from Bay Trail Science Olympiad team that also did very well. Our Odyssey, the mine team at Bay Trail, placed third, fifth, and sixth in regional competition in athletics numerous county and sectional championships. And this is just, uh, uh, an absolute, um, sort of a, a drip of all the incredible things that our students accomplish outside of just academically being strong here in Penfield. And, uh, we're really proud for everything that our students do. And of course, it's because of great partnerships with families, the community, and our staff in all of our schools. Our district goals is really the ultimate piece of everything that we do in the sense that, um, our goals are created with the Board of Education, and then that acts as the umbrella for all decisions moving forward. And so, we're very lucky to have a school board that believes in, um, being consistent with goals, which allows the school district to truly get into three- and five-year planning so the goals don't change every year. And our goals, um, while they've been tweaked here and there, have always focused on academic achievement and excellence, really with, um, a focus on development of the whole student, partnerships within the district and without, in the community. And then, of course, uh, this is very important with this part of our budget hearing, is fiscal responsibility and really looking at our operations and budget, making sure it's structured in, um, a safe, efficient facilities, and provide adequate resources to our, uh, students. And this is where I turn it over to Dr. Sansucci, who will get a little bit deeper into the financials of our 2019-20 budget overview. Dr. Sansucci?
Thank you very much. This is the required budget hearing, so, um, we've been building up to this since October. So, the, tonight's, uh, presentation of the budget looks a little different than the one, than the ones that we've been examining as we move throughout the process. So as the board knows, and the community who's been following us knows, we started this process, um, really in October, and we've been working through it methodically until now. We do that in a way that makes sense to our community and to our board, to our parents. And in terms of the way we look at the various components of the budget, the way we, we package them together for examination, the way we talk and think about them. Tonight's presentation, um, is the last formal presentation of the budget, and it's done in a required way. So, some years ago, the State Education Department determined that it would be useful for communities if they, if there was the ability for there to be statewide comparisons. And so, some packaging of the components of the budget in a standardized way across the state. That's not the way we really look at it, uh, but it's part of the mandate that we look at it that way tonight. So if you don't see, um, you won't see the presentation in the way that we've typically seen it. Also required tonight are a number of, of legal requirements. So legal notices, the budget notice, uh, the property tax report card, and so on. We intend to make it as informative as we can. We want to talk a little bit, um, about it, um, in a way, still, that makes sense to us. But I just want to sort of foreshadow that it, it is a bit different than the way we normally do it. In terms of the quick facts, the, the elevator conversation for this budget, it's a 2.6% budget-to-budget increase. That, that results in a 2.94% increase, which is just below, um, our property tax cap. So this will be another year, uh, yet ano- the district has been under the tax cap since its inception, and we are below it, just below it, again, for this year. That will result, and we'll talk about this a little more, uh, as we move through the presentation, but that will result in a, in a rate increase of about 80 cents or 3% per thousand for the town of Penfield. The other towns vary. We'll talk about that some more as we move along. I think it's important as we start this conversation, we talked about fiscal responsibility. A budget's really a financial statement of the district's goals. You know, I would always say that what gets budgeted gets done. And a budget reflects the priorities of a community. That's you, as we've moved along, you've seen that the vast majority of our budget is, uh, in the instructional areas. That makes sense. But we've also, uh, focused as we move through on the fiscal responsibility goal and, and made it, made efforts to improve efficiency, to save money where we can. We've heard during the course of this year, conversations, presentations, uh, by Mr. McNiff on energy efficiency, changes that he's made in terms of lighting to improve both the district and, and to reduce costs. We've talked a lot, and one of the board's primary goals has been that of strategic financial management, where we look out over a number of years. We try and be proactive, try and think ahead, uh, and try and, and, um, and manage the operation so that, um, we can continue to support the program, uh, that our, that our community values. We do that a number of ways. Some are big and complicated, and, and over the course of this year, we've had lots of conversation about the healthcare consortiums, about workers' compensation, a consortium that we participate with other districts in, um, in order to reduce and restrain costs. We've talked about our, our initiative to move towards a high deductible healthcare plan. We're offering that now and having, starting to have conversations about it. Those are sort of examples that I offer as, as, as initiatives around efficiency, but they're big and complex. I think it's important that we note that we do lots of little things, too. So, um, we participate in, just as an example, we participate in 24 cooperative bids. So we pool our needs, we work with other districts, we try and get the best price on all of those items. And we think that by doing that, by pooling together, um, our quantities, that we can improve bidder attention and, and do the best we can. So things large and small, um, but an effort and a focus on efficiency as we move along. This year, that results in the 1920 budget's been established, and this has been adopted by the Board of Education. So that happened at the last meeting. This is the, the hearing, um, but the adoption of the budget itself by the board's already been accomplished. The next step after tonight, of course, is the vote, um, requesting approval of that approved budget. $100,733,732, it's about a $2.6 million increase, or 2.6%. And now we swing into some of the required presentations. So, um, this format, the three parts of the budget, administration, capital, and program, are a little bit different than, than the way you've seen them. I'll show you in just a few minutes what those pieces compose of. But these are, for Penfield, um, the, the, essentially, we split our budget up in a particular mandated way, and this is the result of that. It's very consistent from year to year. Last year's pie looked very similar to this one's. And our pie looks about this, very much the same as, as other area districts. This slide represents the components of the, of those three pie slices, if you will. So the administrative component includes, uh, the Board of Educat- what you would expect it to include, Board of Education, central administration, finance, and so on. It also includes some special items, such as the district's insurance policy, that is, property insurance, uh, dues for organizations the, the, the school belongs to as an organization, BOSI's administrative costs, curriculum development, uh, research, and also the administration of transportation, and then all of the benefits, um, um, prorated for any people, uh, in this piece of the budget. So that's one of the major differences here, is we tend to look at benefits as a piece of the budget separately. This distributes it across, uh, those three components. This part of the budget, so approximately 75% of the entire budget, represents the instructional, the program component piece. So here, instruction, district transportation's included here. We don't tend to think of it that way, but transportation, um, um, the state sees transportation as necessary to make the instructional program available to students. For students to get to school, um, transportation for many is necessary, and so it's included here, along with census and employee benefits supporting those, those, um, the folks in tho- in those categories. And finally, capital component, which is operation and maintenance of the plant, and then, um, the pieces, transfers for capital projects, debt service, and, uh, as, transfers for our school lunch program, as well as, um, employee benefits for those folks. So when you add all that together, again, those three components, um, increase, um, are, compose the, the approximate $100 million of the budget. In terms of the component increases, um, administration, capital, uh, budget-to-budget about 2%, 6% for debt, for, um, the capital component, driven primarily by, um, the increase in debt service for our elementary additions project. So we anticipated and planned for that. Terms of revenue, so that's the expenditure side of the budget. In terms of revenue, the other half of our budget, um, you can see here the 2.7% increase, uh, in additional state aid that we're receiving. The other smaller components of the budget, including, um, draws from reserves, a decrease, slight decrease there as rates decline. That's consistent with our reserve plan. A transfer, um, uh, I'm sorry, an appropriated fund balance, maintaining, uh, the same appropriated fund balance from year to year. Payments in lieu of taxes decreasing as properties age off of the, of the schedule. It's a declining schedule for those properties, and we haven't had the addition, uh, in the last year of new property in pilot. County sales tax, uh, and the real property tax at 2.9%. You add all those changes together, and we end up back at the $100.7 million, the 2.6% and 2.5%, uh, I'm sorry, $2.5 million increase budget-to-budget, a balanced budget. That's, uh, that, that 2.9% is the increase in the levy. So that's the total amount of, of taxes collected by the district. That's of interest to people, but I think more of interest to people is the rate, because that's how we pay taxes. So we convert that levy to a rate, a rate per thousand. How will that affect me as a taxpayer, is what folks want to know. That, as you know, has, um, is influenced by equalization rates. So equalization rates are the, um, the ratio that property is assessed in a community versus what it would sell for on the open market. That's because assessments, uh, and changes in assessment can lag changes in the market. New York State makes this determination. It's not a local determination. It's certainly not a school district determination. But it impacts how taxes are calculated, and so it's important for us to talk about it and, and understand. So rates in Penfield are declining. We, uh, they were, um, in 1718 at 100% and had been at 100% for some time before that. The market heated up. I think we've experienced this. Properties have been turning over fairly quickly when they go on the market. And so what the state has seen is that assessments in the town of Penfield are trailing the real market value of those properties. So the rate, that ratio declined to 95% um, last year. The town planned a reassessment, but that was delayed. So for next year, um, the rate will fall to 90%. Essentially, the state is saying that, uh, on average, might not be true of any individual house, but on average, the, uh, the assessed value of a home represents about 90% of its market value. Same thing's happening in Massedon and Walworth, they're falling as well. Parent, Brighton, Parenton, and Pittsford are going to remain at 100%. Brighton just reassessed last year. That's why they're at 100. They'd already gone through this. Parenton reassessed, um, proactively. Their rate started to fall, and they, uh, just last year went through a reassessment. They'll remain at 100%. Pittsford's 100. We only have a tiny slice of their, uh, of that town. So this is the way that looks. Once you, this is based on those equalization rates, those changed equalization rates, as well as estimates of assessed valuation. This is not final. This is tentative, and it will change by the time, um, we get to August and finally adopt rates. But it's important for our community, for us to be able to project what this budget results in in terms of taxes. So you see that here. The changes in equalization rate, um, and the changes, um, um, across the, the various towns that comprise, portions of towns that comprise our school district. So Penfield, our largest town, 80% per thousand increase, uh, just about 3% decrease as in the other towns, with the exception of Walworth, where it increases to, uh, by about 4%. Again, I, I spoke to this slide already, but, um, essentially, the, the point is that, um, the, those equalization rates and the changes in rate are intended to ensure that everyone, to make, to provide equity, to ensure that everyone with a similar market value home should pay about the same in terms of, uh, taxes, no matter what their assessment. And this is just an example of how that works. So you hear, see here, Penfield, uh, all these homes theoretically at a market value of 100%. They would have varying levels of assessment, and the differences in the tax rate are intended, uh, in that calculation, rates per thousand, to ensure that they all, hopefully, uh, pay the same amount of taxes for the same valued home. It's a confusing part of the calculation. I think it's confusing to our public. It is complicated. But this slide, I think, is, we attempt to summarize it. This is in our newsletter, um, and I think this, we try to get, uh, to summarize it in a way that helps people understand the impact. So, um, we estimate the impact on a $200,000 home, um, show the, the rates, the rate changes, and then show what that turns into with star, with basic star, and with senior enhanced star. This has gotten more and more complicated as the state continues to fool around with the star calculation. But we still provide it because we think it provides, um, some sort of grounding information for our community. Now we swing into some required disclosures. So the state requires that we disclose, uh, the salaries of any administration, anyone in administration with a salary of $132,000 or more. You see here those folks listed. Also, oh, um, also a property tax report card. So, um, uh, this demonstrates, this slide, I should say, and the, and this card, provides much of the information that I just provided you in a specific, uh, format, along with the public school enrollment and the Consumer Price Index. What it's really intended to display here is that we are not, in fact, um, asking for an override of the tax cap. The tax cap, as the board knows, isn't really a cap. It's more of a trigger. Over, um, if we were to adopt a levy over the cap, we would require a 60% supermajority. We are not, this slide shows that. That means that our budget will pass at 50% plus one, um, a traditional, um, a traditional public vote. Also included, uh, as part of that property tax report card, is, uh, a display of our reserves and the use of them. This summarizes that, as well as the values at, um, March 1st. And really, we had, we spent quite a bit more time than this and spent, um, and looked at this in much more detail in December, when as we go through our process, we evaluate, um, our reserves. But as you can see here tonight, we've listed the various capital reserves as we put aside money for future capital projects. We show our bus purchase reserve, um, that, uh, we'll talk about in just a minute as we talk about this year's bus purchase. We show the draws from it, as well as the other reserves for various purposes. So workers' compensation, unemployment, um, and insurance reserve, tax surgiore, employee accrued benefits, um, and a retirement contribution reserve. The school budget notice is distinct from the property tax report card, and I apologize, but it is much of the same. The new piece of information here, it includes lots of the same stuff, but the new piece here, really, uh, that this is intended to dis- to display, is the difference between our budget and a contingent budget. So under the, under the law, um, for many years, there is this concept of a contingent budget. On top of that, uh, along with the property tax cap, came the, the requirement that if our budget is defeated twice, um, the, um, the board is obligated, you, you, with one defeat, you may offer it again. At the second defeat, the board is obligated to adopt a budget that, with no property tax increase, it falls to zero. To get there, along the way, you also have to comply with all of the old contingent budget rules. So this, um, slide shows those, uh, shows what a contingent budget would look like in the event of a defeated budget. So it shows, uh, the, uh, this year's adopted budget, the three components, administrative program and capital, uh, the proposed budget, and what the contingent budget would look like. As you can see, taking out the contingent, the non-contingent items, the items that are not allowed in a, in a budget that has been defeated, get you within .67, um, of the 0%, so the board be obligated to take out an additional $656,000 to get to zero. That's the, the intent of this slide, is to, is to make that transparent. Basic star exemption impact, uh, this is a required statement of what star saves the taxpayer. So, um, it's simply a calculation of the value of that $50,000, $15,000 star exemption and our rate. So, um, essentially, the, um, the legislature wants to make sure they get credit for that, so it's a required disclosure. And is inclu- sorry, that was editorializing, and I apologize. But, uh, that's really the purpose of it. Sample ballot, the, um, uh, we also, I also want to go through for the public and for the board, what folks will see when they go into the, into the voting booth. So, um, first item, proposition number one, is the approval of the annual budget. So a yes or no at 50% to adopt the budget for the upcoming school year. Proposition two, um, is our bus purchase, our annual bus purchase. As you know, every year, uh, we purchase a few buses, um, so that we don't ever face, um, um, having to replace the entire fleet at once. So for this year, um, on our schedule, we're requesting the purchase of four big buses, four 66-passenger buses, um, uh, three smaller buses. And new for this year, really an addition, not a replacement, is the eight-passenger bus that we're not a replacement, is the eight-passenger bus that we're asking for authority to, to purchase. As the board knows, we continue to struggle, as do all county and state school districts, really, with a bus driver shortage. And there are cases where that eight-passenger bus, which can be driven by someone without a bus driver's license, a specific license could be used, you know, sporting events and so on, for transportation of equipment. Now, we'll often send two big buses. We'll be able to send a smaller one and a big bus, so we hope that will be helpful. We're asking for approval of that, along with the draw from reserve that will help fund, as part of the plan, that, those replacements. Proposition three is this year's capital project. So, essentially, it is roof replacement at, at two of our buildings, as well as replacement of the, of the carpet and the track surface at the high school. Total cost of $7,550,000, and, I guess that's that. So, sample ballot, in terms of, of order of election, will be Barb Babiar's Emily Belcher, Calvin Freeler. And the vote itself will be held at the high school on May twenty-first, from six to nine. This presentation of video going through the budget in the way that we think of it is, are all available, along with a lot of additional information, at www.penfield.edu. So, with that, are there any questions? And we also need to accept questions from the public.
Hold on, please. All right. So, now would be the comment period. Do I have any audience members who has questions or comments on the budget? Okay. Board members, any questions or comments? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I will now make a brief statement. At our last meeting, the board adopted the 2019-2020 school budget. This proposal continues the board's commitment to providing our students with an outstanding educational program and our residents with an outstanding value. The proposed $100 million budget was put together and carefully reviewed over a period of several months. We have worked diligently to find spending efficiencies while formulating a budget that continues to support the whole student. This year, we are asking for your support of a proposed tax levy increase of 2.94%, which is below our state mandated tax levy limit of 2.99%. It is important to note that Penfield has been within the state mandated tax cap in all eight years of its, of its existence. In addition to the general fund budget, you will see two propositions on the ballot. The first is for the purchase of eight school buses, which will be funded through the school bus reserve fund and the general fund budget. The second is for the 2019 capital project, which includes roof replacements at three schools, chiller replacement at cobbles, and athletic updates at Penfield High School. As a board, we are passionate about the value of the education provided by the Penfield School, Central School District. We will continue to advocate for our students and our district in order to preserve the excellent educational program we provide for our students, in balance with our residents' budgets. Thank you, and please remember to vote on Tuesday, May twenty-first, between six o'clock AM and nine o'clock PM at Penfield High School. The annual budget hearing has ended. Thank you. And we will now return to our regular meeting. All right. May I have a motion in a second, that the board approved the following consent agenda to include approval of minutes of April twenty-third, 2019, as submitted, acceptance of recommendation from the Committee on Special Education, acceptance of recommendation from the Committee on Preschool Special Education, acceptance of recommendations from the Superintendent for Personnel Changes, and approval of requested dispose of unserviceable textbooks. We have a motion in a second.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed? Thank you. No treasurer's report tonight? Special reports tonight?
We do have one special report tonight.
Okay.
And, yeah, so I'll turn it over to Mr. Jim Pfeifer, who will give a special report on our social-emotional learning action plan. Oh, sure. I didn't know if you were gonna go sit over there, but I think you're fine here. No, you're good. You're good. We'll keep you, we'll keep you in your seat. Thank you, Tom.
You're welcome.
All right. Well, this has been a long time coming. I'm excited to finally have something to share with the board and with the public around our social-emotional health and well-being action plan. We short that by calling it the Social-Emotional Learning Action Plan, but it's really about much more than learning. It really is about supporting the health and well-being of our students in a social-emotional manner as well. I'm used to a new clicker here and not look at the wrong screen. So, before we dive into the plan, just to set some context, is that how we came to be here, where the district is at a point where we wanted to develop an action plan regarding the social-emotional health and well-being of our students. First and foremost, it's important to point out that social-emotional health and well-being is, is not an area of concern just in Penfield. It's not an area of concern just in Western New York or New York State, but it is a national area of concern and focus. We are not on the cutting edge of this, but we are certainly not lagging far behind in this either. We're not as far along as I think we'd like to be as a district, but we will be moving very quickly over the next five years to get ourselves where we want to be. Going back a little bit further, back to the sixteen-seventeen school year, we held listening sessions with our students, with our community, with our faculty and staff, following two years of tragic loss of student life. And we heard loud and clear that while we are well-received and, and, and people are very proud of our, the academic performance of our, performance of our students and the academic achievements that, that we have, we needed to have a greater focus on the social-emotional health and well-being of our students. And so, from that, we decided to partner with the Children's Institute, and in the seventeen-eighteen school year, engaged in a study wherein the Children's Institute met with administrators, with focus groups of staff, and conducted surveys and gathered information about our character education and social-emotional learning efforts here in the district. That study, the results of that study, the findings and recommendations are available on our website for the public to read, and if you haven't had a chance to look at that, I strongly encourage you to do so. In that study, we'll talk a little bit about that briefly. You know, there were, there were positive findings. The Children's Institute found some, some really great things about our district, and that students and staff alike noted that it's a very positive place to work and come to school, that there are many opportunities to learn and grow for both students and staff, that our anti-bullying efforts are largely very successful. Not to say that we don't have instances of bullying in our school, we certainly do, but that we work hard to try to prevent them, and that we respond appropriately to stop such behaviors when we are made aware of them. And that, I think this is the biggest one, as it relates to the, to the plan itself, is that there is a, in large part, a readiness on the part of our staff to take on an initiative around the social-emotional health and well-being of our students. However, there were areas that we could improve. We, it was noted that we don't have a consistent understanding of what it means to address the needs of the whole student or the whole child, that we're, there's a lack of consistency across our four elementary buildings in terms of their character and social-emotional learning programs, and that leads to inconsistency vertically when students come to Bay Trail and onto the high school as well. And there's other areas where we can focus greater to build students' skills and abilities around social-emotional health and well-being. So, from that, there are also, the Children's Institute also put forth some recommendations as to how we can improve. I'll share those with you in a moment. And we began that work this year, starting with the Leadership Summit in the July of 2018. The Children's Institute came and presented to our administrators and teacher leaders the findings of the study and the recommendations, and we began then laying the foundation to build a common understanding of what it means to address the needs of the whole student. Following that, we had our opening day sessions, again, with the Children's Institute, and they presented again the findings of the study to the whole staff, and then set the foundation and explained what it means to our staff around meeting the needs of the whole student. We then had Dr. Ginsburg in on our October Conference Day, who did a full staff session with all of our instructional staff in the auditorium, and then a follow-up session with a smaller group of, of select staff here in the Commons. And then we had the Children's Institute back again on our January Conference Day to talk about relationship-based classrooms for secondary and elementary teachers, both having a three-hour session in there. We also had Mr. Brian Mendler in to work with our teaching assistants over at Bay Trail on one of our conference days as well. So, during the course of the year, we've, we've continued to build our knowledge base around social-emotional health and well-being. Even though we were in the planning phases, we didn't want to sit still as a district and not take advantage, let another year go by, without increasing our knowledge and abilities around addressing the social-emotional health and well-being of our students. And then during that time, we've been working closely as a leadership team, our instructional leadership team, which consists of the Superintendent, Mrs. Gregory, Deputy Super, our Assistant Superintendent for Personnel, myself, all of our building principals, as well as our Directors for Humanities, STEAM, and Technology, working together with the Children's Institute to develop the action plan and, and the items related to the action plan during the course of this year. And then we have presented to both the community in late March and interested staff in early April, the draft of the plan, the full draft of the plan. What you're gonna see tonight is a summary of that. So, we've been very busy. It's been a long process, but it's been an interesting and very engaging a process along the way, and we're excited to have something to share now. So, the recommendations that came out of the children's study, first and foremost was, was to create a vision statement, something that would give us a guidepost for decision-making around social-emotional learning, social-emotional health and well-being. We'll talk more about that in a moment, and we have a draft to share with you. The second, and again, these are very, very summarized, the full recommendations are, there's far more verbiage there in the, in the study that's linked online, but these are summarized versions. To implement a consistent SEL curriculum and practices across our four elementary schools, which will build on consistency vertically into Bay Trail and into the high school. To streamline communication. And this was really twofold. The major point of this was that oftentimes, there were breakdowns in communication when, among staff who were trying to assist students in need of social-emotional support. And really, that comes back to another piece around our, our response to intervention processes for behavior and social-emotional support. So, we'll talk about that. But we want to increase people's ability to get the information they need and support the students in the manner that they need to. The second part of that was, there was a misunderstanding, as a result of the Children's Institute, as we began sharing it, that we had to make a choice as a district between supporting the social-emotional health and well-being of our students and maintaining our high academic expectations, and nothing could be further from the truth. From the onset, as we started drafting this action plan, internally, we adopted a statement of creating a district-wide culture of, of caring while maintaining high expectations for students. And that's been kind of a touchstone for us internally as we've worked on this action plan. It's not a choice. One supports the other. And if we do a good job of supporting the social-emotional health and well-being, I'll show you some research in a moment, we will see increases in student achievement. It's not, it's not a choice between the two, and that's an important piece to note. To help do that, we need to integrate SEL, not just teach it explicitly, which we'll talk about in a moment, but also integrate it into other core curricular areas so that there's repetition built in and real-life context built into students learning these skills. And we'll be working on that. And then reexamining the roles of the counselors. This was an interesting recommendation because through the, the new New York State Guidance Plan recommendations, we had to do that anyway. So, that's already part of the works, and that process is ongoing now. The board heard a presentation at the last meeting around the draft of that new guidance plan that's coming out. So, what does the research tell us about focusing on social-emotional learning? First and foremost, we'll see reduced emotional distress in our students. This is our main point. This is the, this is the major why of why we're engaging in this, because our students will be less stressed out, there will be less social-emotional problems like depression and anxiety, and less social withdrawal. The research shows that to us. As a result, we will see improved student behaviors in the classroom, including greater motivation, more engagement, and less undesirable behaviors. The third bullet is really just a flip of the second, so I don't need to necessarily point that out. You can all read that. And then the bottom line there is, we will likely see, according to the research, increases in student achievement on standard measures. So, our state assessments, our region scores, our graduation rates, if we are supporting our students socially and emotionally through our practices, they will continue to perform, if not outperform, where they are now down the road. So, when we talk about social-emotional learning and we look at the work of CASL, which is the Collaborative for Academic and Social-Emotional Learning, it's a national organization that supports this effort. They are a major component of the Children's Institute and who the Children's Institute relies on for much of their information and work. They break social-emotional learning down into these five key areas of self-management, self-awareness, social awareness, relationship skills, and responsible decision-making. Within these five key areas, there are many, many sub-skills and abilities that we will be working on with our students. There is, you can search this very easily if you look up the five SEL competencies and dig into more information with this as well. As always in New York State, we can't just accept what's going on nationally. We have to be able to put our own spin on it. So, New York State took those five competencies and adapted them into three SEL benchmarks. But if you flip back and forth and you read the SEL benchmarks from New York State and you compare them to the five competencies, they are nearly identical. And when you look at the skills, the skills that we'll talk about that are within the SEL benchmarks, which are also broken down into many sub-skills by grade level and by competency, that we can then use, is the same way we use the learning standards in our content areas, they are all there. They're all the same. And so, we will be using these benchmarks and the sub-skills and abilities within them to drive our work moving forward, to make sure our students have those necessary skills and abilities moving forward. These are linked on the site as well, and you can find those on the New York State So, what have we done this year? As I mentioned, we've been engaging in a lot of action planning moving forward to figure out what we're gonna do over the course of the next five years to make sure we're where we want to be. I reviewed this slightly already. We had opening day with the Children's Institute, our October and January conference days, and then throughout the course of the year, we've had individual teachers and administrators, as well as, as well as teams of teachers and administrators, attending various workshops with the Children's Institute, with Monroe One and Monroe Two BOCs, as well as some of us attending national conferences. I was fortunate enough to be able to attend the Learning Forward Conference, which is a, a national professional development conference in Dallas, and, and outside of Dallas, Texas. And every session I went to over the course of those two days was around social-emotional learning. And there were tons of options. I could've spent a week there going to, to social-emotional learning presentations there. So, this is, is a big issue nationally, and there is still a lot of learning going on among our teachers who are bringing it back to their leadership teams, sharing with their grade level and departments, and building our capacity in this regard. So, what, what have we accomplished so far? First and foremost, going back to the concept of the recommendation from the Children's Institute of a vision statement. We worked very closely, as I mentioned, beginning back in the summer of, in July of 2018, with the Children's Institute, and they took us through an activity with our teacher leaders around, to begin the process of developing a vision statement. And what that activity looked like was each building sat together with their administrators and their teacher leaders, and they asked the groups to then come up with the nine top attributes that they wanted, that each building wanted to develop in their students. And they were to arrange them in the form of a diamond. We were given pieces of paper, and they were to arrange them in the form of a diamond. There was an interesting exercise because the groups had to grapple and prioritize some attributes that they wanted to develop in students, but there was a great deal of overlap and discussion. And sometimes semantics are on which word to choose and which word not. That was the beginning of it. And then we shared out, and the groups talked about why they chose the attributes that they wanted to develop. We set that work aside and came back to it as a leadership team at our first instructional leadership team, and the Children's Institute then took the leadership team, and they put all of the terms that were selected by the buildings up on the wall. So, if you take those nine words times our six different buildings, up, almost fifty-four different words minus the overlap, I think we ended up somewhere around thirty-five or forty different terms or attributes of students that we wanted to develop as a district. We then, as a leadership team, had to select five each that we felt were the most important. So, we started with that large group, and then we narrowed it down to approximately, I think where we ended up was about five of the bottom ones, and then engagement, collaboration, and problem-solving were in there. So, we ended up with about eight terms that, as a leadership team, we adapted from our teacher leaders and administrators. From that, the Children's Institute then went back and crafted two or three draft vision statements. And they were bringing them back to us to grapple with as a leadership team to adopt as our, as our potential vision statement. While that was going on, I was at another professional developments session with another New York State expert, Giselle Martin-Keneep, who's an expert in formative assessment and many other areas of education. We were working on systems for change, and I was working through the SEL piece with, with the work that we were doing. And Giselle came over and asked me, you know, what I was working on. I explained it to her, and she said, "Well, that's interesting work. Doesn't your district already have a vision statement?" And I thought, "Yeah." She said, "Well, it's really hard to focus on two different visions at one time. Can I offer a suggestion?" And she offered the concept of a theory of action statement so that we wouldn't have another statement competing with our vision statement, but something that aligned to our district mission and vision, but focused us on the social-emotional learning aspects, the social-emotional health and well-being aspects. So, we brought that concept back with the Children's Institute at our next instructional leadership team meeting, and as a leadership team and with the support of the Children's Institute, decided that that, we felt like that was a better direction to go. And we then had an initial version of the statement that you see before you now. We shared that out then with our all-administrators team, which included all of our assistant principals, and we tweaked it a little bit further to add the phrase facilitate learning through into that second part of it. And then we tweaked it one more time. We grappled a lot with the terms perseverance and resilience. And as we looked at those initially, we thought of them very synonymously. But we recently read a text that, that really differentiated the two for us. It talked about perseverance as the ability to push through something that is difficult, which we feel is important for our students. And that was initially the word we had chosen. But it talked about resilience as being the ability to bounce back after enduring something difficult. And when we thought about those two and those more succinct terms, we felt both were very appropriate and necessary in this statement, and so we added resilience back in to those other characteristics that you see before you there. So, as we get to the end, if there are questions or comments about this, I'd love to hear them. And there will be another opportunity for the public and staff to give feedback on this as well moving forward. But that's how we came to this theory of action statement, and why we chose to go with this version rather than another vision statement for the district. Then, within, with working with the Children's Institute, they recommended that we break our action steps of our plan down into five key categories, or four key categories, the ones that you see before you here. Explicit instruction, teacher classroom practices, school district practices, and then our district policies and procedures. So, we've done that. And within those areas, when we look at teacher and classroom practices, we want to focus and enhance our staff ability to develop and implement psychologically safe or relationship-based classrooms, which we started at our January conference day, around ACEs and trauma-informed instruction, around restorative practices, around culturally sensitive practices, developing mindfulness and growth mindsets, as well as our teachers' ability to use executive functioning to maximize student performance. Many of these are embedded within the SEL benchmarks, especially when you look at growth mindset and mindfulness. In terms of student, or school and district practices, and I'll come back to explicit instruction in a moment, although I think you can all guess what I'm going to say there. You've heard it a few times. In terms of school and district practices, again, improving relationships among adults. And it wasn't to say that we don't get along, but in an organization of, correct me if I'm wrong, nearly 900 employees, you know, things aren't always as cheerful as we might like them to be. And I jokingly said at the presentations, you know, "Our students imitate what they see us as adults doing." Think about Starbucks. You didn't used to see kids walking around schools with Starbucks or Dunkin' Donuts cups, but as the adults are walking around, the kids want to do it. Cell phones are another great example. So, when we have staff that aren't always being cordial and polite to one another, we can't then wonder why, when we walk down the hallway, a student might not acknowledge us and say hi to us, or to one another. So, we want to start modeling those positive behaviors and interactions as adults, so that our students begin to pick those, those behaviors up. We need to improve adult self-care. This is, it's a, it's a very rewarding profession, but it can be a very challenging profession. And our teachers and staff work very, very hard. We need to help make sure that they know how to take care of themselves, so that they can give their best selves to our students. The new guidance plan we already mentioned, that's part of this work. Again, culturally sensitive practices at the school and district level. Consistency, building that consistency in across our four elementary buildings with our new SEL piece and our character ed programs. Scheduling will be a big piece. We need to make sure that we have time to deliver this to our students and engage them in this learning. Our RTI processes, I mentioned that, building consistent forms and processes, and making that information accessible to all who might need it to, to assist our students and support them. Restorative practices, and again, standards-based grading practices. That can make people feel very, very nervous when we talk about standards-based grading, but we're not so much focused on the grading piece at first. Our initial focus is going to be on the instructional practices that support standards-based grading, because what those will do is hold our students to that high level of accountability while providing them the necessary support and assistance along the way to meet those high expectations. From a district perspective, we'll be looking at, again, the theory of action statement, looking at our reviewing policies. And when we're ready, we'll be asking the board to review our recess, our wellness, and our homework policies, and possibly make changes of those to align to these practices, to align our code of conduct to social emotional health and wellbeing practices and activities. And then also to, we're going to work to build up a system of monitoring for continuous improvement, to make sure that we're getting out of this what we're putting into it and what we intend to. And then just to go back to explicit instruction, so that Barb can smile when I say it, is that we will be applying the efforts of the insured focus on learning to social emotional learning, health, and wellbeing. We will enhance and develop and implement our guaranteed and viable curriculum. You guys can say it with me.
Yeah, right.
You all know it by now. We will have, we will be using research and evidence-based instructional strategies to deliver this to our students. We will have balanced and coherent systems of assessments to measure student learning and progress, and find out where we need to, to fill in holes. And again, building up, we have a very robust academic RTI program. We need to be a little bit more robust in what we're providing the students on the social emotional behavioral side, and build up those, that repertoire of tools to help support our students K-12 and document it more consistently. So, we believe through doing all of this and working on all of this over the course of the next five years, that this will put us in a very, very good place and put our students in a very, very good place. For the board and the public's knowledge, it isn't our plan at this point to dictate which, how buildings will prioritize these efforts. We have an expert in standards-based grading and instructional practices coming in the summer for our Leadership Institute. We are then going to work, we're going to have a third day of summit, like we used to in the past. We've been down to two, but we're going to have a third day where we want the building and the leadership teams to grapple with, how are we going to go about this? If in five years, this is where we need to be, where are we ready to start as our building and have the buildings then develop plans each year and then over the course of five years to help them get to where they need to be in that time? And they'll be, they'll be working on that moving forward. So, that was the really, really quick version. This was an hour and a half presentation for both the community and the staff. So, you, you do have a document that outlines most of this information. We will be creating, for those of you who really like to hear my voice, I'm voicing over a PowerPoint version to turn into a movie that will be put online for staff and for the community. There will be a link there for you to click on and provide us with feedback and comments and suggestions to improve the plan. I see this plan as always being a draft. I think, I think it's going to be something where it can continue to tweak and reflect on and mold over the course of the next five years as we implement it. But I'd be happy to take any suggestions or questions from the board at this time.
Board members. It's a little overwhelming.
Yeah.
You know, I think, I think-
It's exciting.
Barry, I think it's amazing what you've put together, but I also think that was a lot. And you'll, you'll probably hear some suggestions and comments come your way as we have some time to-
Absolutely.
But it, it sounds very promising, very exciting. It, it sounds like you've really covered so much of what we've all been talking about. It, it doesn't seem like anything has been overlooked. Mark, did you have a comment?
Yeah, a quick question or comment. You know, you had, you had mentioned doing this over five years, and I think it's important to say, we're not, we're not starting from zero.
Right.
We, we are starting from, as you said earlier on, we're, you know, we're not on the cutting edge, but we're not far behind it. And, and so, when you talk about five years, can you just kind of explain, if we're not, if we're really ahead of the curve already, what do we expect to see in five years, and what's the, the intent of this, of doing this over five years, if we're already ahead of the curve?
Well, as Catherine said, this is kind of a long list of topics, right? And some of these are very, very deep. So, I'll mention standards-based grading, for example. Within standards-based grading instructional practices, there are four or five components that, in and of themselves, each could take about a year to tackle and grapple on a building-wide basis and get implemented. So, these are, these are going to be big. It's going to take some time to develop the capacity of step first, I mean, first, looking at planning at a building level, letting the buildings grapple with and do some planning with their leadership team, so that we have the necessary buy-in from staff to move forward. That's probably going to honestly take a good part of next year. And we'll start it at summit, but I, I can see the buildings needing to learn and grapple and plan throughout the course of next year, and then really begin to dig in. We will be working on this for our conference days, probably every conference day over the next five years, offering different sessions aligned to these topics, so that people can get the professional development they need. But when you think about providing the necessary professional development to the instructional staff, to our teachers and teaching assistants, and others who are interacting with our students, that alone on all of these areas is going to take quite a bit of time. But then for them to hone their skills, ask questions, maybe get more training, and then start to implement those practices. And what we'll see is, is our hope, is that in that, over the course of five years, we'll be able to see layers of these being implemented in the classroom, right, and in the buildings as we're going forward. It's not going to be everything all at once, I don't think, at the end of five years, but by five years, we should be able to see consistent evidence of these areas within our classrooms and in our schools. That's why it's going to take so long.
Right.
But it'll go by fast.
Yeah.
And Catherine, if I can say, I appreciate the compliments, but as always, this isn't, this isn't me. This is the team. This is a big group of people working very, very hard and digging into a lot of, of difficult conversations. I think the one thing I left out that I would like to touch on is our March, our March Day, on March 22nd, when students were not in school and teachers were not here, administrators were here as a workday. We had read two books on the topic of cultural sensitivity. And while are all the students sitting together in the cafeteria and the hate you give. And then we had our teachers who lead our Mosaics Club lead us through a protocol. It was supposed to be an hour and a half. We ended up being together for three hours. It was an incredible discussion, an eye-opening discussion. And we're looking forward to doing more of that, and also then looking at, working with those teachers to offer that alone as a professional development opportunity for our teachers and staff moving forward, because it was, it was a great, a great learning experience, I think, for all of us.
Well, that sounds wonderful. And you know what I, what I noticed amongst a lot, I mean, there's a lot that, that you had presented. And we have been very student-focused and student-centered, because we know our students, you know, not just ours, but all around, they've been hurting, they're anxious, and and there's, there's things that are just happening that seem to be more pronounced than certainly when I was growing up, although every generation has their issues. But what I was, what I'm also impressed with is the focus on the adults. Not only your own behaviors, but the self-care. And it, I think more than, in a time like we've never been in before, good adult examples are just critical. And so, to put that right in the, in the whole program, in the curriculum, or however we're going to call this, I think that's, I just have to say kudos to that. I think that's just a great thing to not overlook, and I'm glad it's part of it.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Yes, Dr. Putnam.
I just, I do want to say, both as a superintendent and as a parent of a couple of kids in our school district, this topic of social emotional learning is something that's near and dear to what we do. I've given kudos to the board many times, that we're one of the only boards that has a focused goal for our district around development of the whole student. We talk openly that the reason we use that term "whole student" and not "whole child" is because we realize that we have to partner with parents. We only see students six, seven hours a day. And so, I just, I wanted to thank the board, because all of this work wouldn't move forward if the board wasn't setting the goal around development of the whole student. And so, I did want to share, I know Jim won't take credit, but I do want to publicly just let him know that I really do thank him on this. It is a team effort, but for my Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction to tackle social emotional learning with the same passion and professionalism that he used to tackle his two favorite terms of insured focus on learning and guaranteed viable curriculum, I, I joke, but, but he used that same, that same passion and professionalism to tackle something different, but using it the same lens as we did with the work over five years around truly being able to stand up as a superintendent and say, "If your child's in third grade at Harris Hill, and they transfer mid-year to third grade in Indian Landing, two elementary schools in our district, the curriculum they're going to walk into is the same." The teacher and the, and the staff might, but might have slightly different teaching methods, and it might look a little different, but it's the same curriculum. It doesn't feel like you just left and went to a different district. And I, I'm proud to be able to say that academically. What I want to be able to say within three to five years is, if you leave one school and go to the other, the vocab's the same when it comes to social emotional learning. The instruction is the same for social emotional learning. We have great things happening in our schools. We just don't, I can't hand you something and says, "This is what we do." And that's why it takes some time to really put that in place. And just, again, kudos to the board. You've been to the New York State School Board Association Convention, and John and Catherine were able to attend the National School Board with me. And one of the things I always think, when I leave that, or when I leave a superintendent conference I attend every year, is we're really ahead of some things. I mean, we're, we're doing some great things, because the board has already created this framework for me and my staff to run with social emotional learning and whole student development. So, thank you to the board and to the community for supporting that. And Jim mentioned that it's not an, it's not an "or," it's an "and." We're going to continue focusing on academics and strong academic rigor, but at the same time, layering in that social emotional support. So, I just want to say thank you to Jim for his whole team, to our principals, to our teachers, to our entire staff that really is taking this on one step at a time, because it's a lot, it's a lot of work.
Yeah.
And it's not about running out and buying a canned program and saying, "We've got SEL, because I've got a program." It's really about being able to train all of our existing staff, and then, as new staff comes in, our interview questions have shifted. We ask about social emotional learning. You all know that every teacher who gets hired, the final interview is with me, unless I'm stuck in a meeting, and then Jim does it today. Thanks, Jim. But those questions, those final questions is about Team Penfield, about social emotional learning. We want to make sure we're hiring people who are, understand that as, as a key. So, that's why it does take time to shift culture. We've got great staff, obviously care about kids and are doing great things, but we want that consistency around it too. So, it's my public thanks to Jim.
Yeah.
It doesn't come with cash, but it does come with a thank you. And, and that's it. So, I just want to say thank you again for the board's support and direction on this. It wouldn't move forward if the board wasn't interested in developing the whole student and understanding the needs of our kids. So, thanks.
Well, thank you. That's nice to hear. We appreciate that. And Jim, lots of good work. Thank you very much.
And that concludes special reports.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Putnam.
You're welcome.
All right. Visitor speaking time. Time is provided within the agenda for residents to bring concerns and comments to the board. Comments should not be related to any particular individual or to the specifics of negotiations, since it is not proper for the board to discuss these issues in public session. A request to speak comment form must be filled out prior to the start of the citizen's comment period and given to the district clerk. It is expected that speakers will limit their comments to five minutes or less. The board reserves the right to limit the total amount of time spent on the citizen's comment period based on the length of the agenda. Written communication to the Board of Education is encouraged as well. And Mr. Palladore, I know that you would like to speak tonight.
Most of you here know why I'm here, but for reference, I'll provide some context. So, on March 13th, 2018, and for the months prior, I began my advocacy for school resource officers in Penfield, New York. The impetus for me was the Marshall County High School and Marjory Stoneman Douglas school shootings, which took, took the lives of 19 people. To remember those lives and all the innocents taken through preventable acts like this, within my five minutes, I'm going to take a 19-second moment of silence, starting right During my time in front of this board, I provided the benefit of SROs at neighboring school districts after talking with their superintendents in detail. And I've witnessed SROs across the country save lives, like what happened last year near Chicago and Indianapolis. We witnessed additional school shooting deaths in Santa Fe, Texas. And tragically, today, there was another incident in Colorado near Denver. I don't believe any lives were lost, at least I hope not. I've spoken to Sheriff Baxter's office, Tom Putnam, multiple times to understand how to implement SROs. It is not a complicated process. I've also provided a full citizen's report in response to the May 22nd, 2018 District Safety Plan, with a reference to proven threat assessment programs. All of this to make sure that our children are safe. On March 28th, 2019, there was a perceived threat at Penfield High School, and it was deemed non-credible. Last week, the same threat was deemed credible, and a school resource officer was put on-site at PHS by the Monroe County Sheriff's Office. The community of Penfield should be told the details as to why this was done. For the months that I have asked for SROs and told that there were no plans and not in the budget, in two weeks, on May 21st, we have a budget vote. And this needs to be in the budget for every single school in Penfield. The Board of Education is raising our budget another $2.5 million. We know the cost for SROs is approximately $700,000 a year for all of the schools. We don't need a new turf field or track at the high school like is proposed in Prop 3 at a portion of the cost of $7.5 million. What we do need is school safety. And I'd encourage every citizen in Penfield to vote "no" for the budget until the amendment is changed to include school resource officers, a pittance to what we need to keep our kids safe. And I'd also say "no" to anyone who's running for school board who doesn't support it. Which leads me to another important question, which is, what are the district's discipline policies? Are they the same lenient policies that led to the tragedies at other schools like Marjory Stoneman Douglas? The PROMIS program? The Penfield community should know what that program is, or what the policies are here in Penfield. And we also should know, based on the SEL, what are we doing to find out if these policies and guidelines aren't working and we need to tag or red-flag potential situations where there is increased aggression? Or there is problems within a school? About two months ago, my daughter came to me and talked to me, who I've never shared any of this with, by the way, and said that the way that they are trained to save themselves in a lockdown drill is to hide behind a backpack. Backpacks are not bulletproof. There's obviously something that happened here in Penfield. We need to know what it is. We need to protect these kids. The cost is not great. It's proven to save lives. And I think it's about time we all here do what's right. So I'd like for you all to start to look at, with the same level of passion that we have for education, the same level of passion that we have for the first bullet of the school, which is a safe environment. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Levia.
Okay, to start off for this week's report, from Harris Hill, Henry Cole, a talented author and illustrator, came to the school to share his writing process and his many interesting stories to the students. The second graders at Indian Landing took a field trip day to Seneca Park Zoo, and they learned about the animals and their natural habitats. Indian Landing's, Indian Landing Student Council also sponsored an Earth Day Bulletin Board, which encouraged students to not use plastic. At Cobble, Screen Smart Week was held two weeks ago, encouraging students and their families to reduce their screen time. At Scribner, kindergarten, kindergarten students researched, drafted, edited, revised, and created a student, a class book called "All About Animals," which was actually published. Students at Scribner also read over 400,000 total minutes in their PTA family reading program called "Get Stuck on Reading", and rewarded, were rewarded with sticking Mr. Herschler to the wall with duct tape. At Bay Trail, seventh grade health students created informative and creative mental health posters for students and staff to look at while walking through the halls. At Penfield High School, the robotics team traveled to Detroit, Michigan, to the first CHAMP's Conference, and even gave presentations to other teams across the nation. Junior prom was held at Locust Hill two weeks ago. It was extremely fun, in my opinion, and it was a nice, it was a nice night full of lots of dancing and just an amazing night. PHS students performed comical and talented acts to compete to win the one-play acts competition just this week. Seniors wore their apparel from their future colleges on May 1st, celebrating their acceptances and commitment to college. And Penfield High School held men's night out with male vocal groups throughout the district, as well as guests from Webster, Wayne, and RIT. Thank you.
Wow, everyone's busy. I'm glad you had a good time at the prom.
It was super fun.
Oh, that's great. Any questions or comments for Levia? Yes, Barb?
Having gone on the board tours at Indian Landing, those, the environmental things were amazing, truly amazing.
Yeah. It was great. Now, do I, do I?
I can, it's okay, I'll mention to the board that the other thing that Levia didn't mention in detail is that this is also advanced placement testing time. And Levia has had a long exam today and some future exams, so if the board is okay, we would like her to go study.
I think that's, thank you to everyone here. Thank you so much, Levia. Okay, superintendent reports.
All right, so I just have a few student-staff honors, and this is always a bizarre time because there's only one bullet, it's mine, because Mark has all done for the budget and because we did it first. So for many months, there's always me and then, and then Dr. Sansucci with a part of the budget. So it always feels a little strange. So just a couple of great, great things happening outside of what Levia mentioned is the Do the Right Thing Award. Congratulations to PHS Senior Jordan Clem, Clem Chek, Clem Chek? Sorry, Jordan, I apologize if you're watching, on being named the recipient of a Do the Right Thing Award by the Rochester Police Department. And Jordan was recognized for helping his neighbor with yard work and obtaining emergency medical care for her. And if you do follow the Rochester Police Department on social media, they had a big sort of celebration for these Do the Right Thing Awards. So it's always great to see a Penfield student being honored. Writing award, congratulations to PHS Senior Carolyn Palermo, who are being selected as a third-place winner in the prose category of the prestigious So-Cole High School Literary Award Contest. And its annual writing competition is sponsored by Friends and Foundation of the Rochester Public Library. Carolyn was recognized for her short story, "Something Found." So just amazing, obviously hard work, leading the talent here at the high school. This is an exciting week. It's National Teacher Appreciation Week. National Teacher Appreciation Week is a time to honor our teachers who lend their passion and skills to educating our students. We take this opportunity to give special thanks to our teachers for their dedication and hard work. Our teachers provide an important role in our students' lives by inspiring a lifelong love of learning and making a difference in their well-being and long-term success. So just a very strong appreciation for all of the teachers in National Teacher Appreciation Week, especially those here in Penfield. This one is also near and dear to my heart because I'm married to a school nurse who doesn't work in this district. But National School Nurse Day is Wednesday, May 8th, and we take a special time to celebrate and recognize the contributions that our school nurses are making to the health and learning of our students. And thank you to our nurses who support education by keeping our students safe, healthy, and ready to learn. They do an incredible job. They're a strong member of every team we have in our building. And I'll also just remind the board, as they know in the community, is that any of the private schools that are within the Penfield boundary also have school nurses that are part of the Pen, Team Penfield, but they are there. So like at Mercy, that is a Penfield employee who is their nurse. And so just a shout-out, not just to our school nurses in our six buildings, but also to those who are hired by the Penfield Central School District within private schools within our boundaries. So just a huge thank you. I just have to do say that I take this time to say thank you to my wife, who's a wonderful nurse. And I have not had to take a temperature of any of my children because she does that all the time. So thank you, because I would have them at urgent care every day because I don't know how to deal with them. But she does a lovely job. That, I believe, is the end of my, I kept it short because we knew that it was the budget here.
Well, I can't let nurses and teachers escape me today because, my mother was a nurse, by the way.
There you go, see?
But we were just, at one of the school tours, we were just talking about the nurse's office. And there's just something about the nurse's office, you know? Everybody has an experience where they had to go to the nurse. And it's never "school nurse," it's always, you have to go to the nurse, you know? And we take that, we take that position for granted, but it's a very special place, I think, in every student's heart. They, we all have a memory of how the student nurse helped us out. And then with the teachers, I mean, we all have the same memory about that favorite teacher. You know, that one who was so inspirational. If it weren't for that one teacher, I may never have whatever. So between all, you know, all the students that cross each teacher's path and every teacher that crosses the student's path, it's just a, it's a great serendipity that can occur.
Absolutely.
It's just a wonderful thing, so.
You know, Catherine, if I can share, I didn't have it on here as an update, but as the board is aware, that this week is National Small Business Week. And so you mentioned teachers who had an impact. So we had, I went to a kickoff breakfast on Monday for Monroe County Small Business Week. We partnered with Nelson Jewelry here in, on 441. There's a piece of his work right there, nice job. But I just tell the story because Mark Nelson is a Penfield graduate who owns Nelson Jewelers there on 441. And he actually was inspired to go into jewelry design by our art teachers when he took jewelry and advanced jewelry. So he came in on Monday, Nancy was there, took some pictures there on social media, really just meeting with the students and talking about their projects and explaining his story. So, so it really is, it's something that in speaking with Mark, it wasn't something that he ever thought he was going to go and be a jeweler. But he took some, some classes here, fell in love with the craft, went on to college, and then now owns his own jewelry shop here in Penfield. So, so it's just a neat, a neat opportunity to showcase that power of a, of a teacher. So thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, where are we now? Change orders, all right. Board members, we are on item eight. Let's see, we have, oh, here we go with my troubles here now. All right, we have our, the change orders on the agenda. The above change orders have been reviewed by and are supported by Architect Vic Tommaselli, Project Manager Gary Huffman, Clerk of the Works Alan McNiff, and Deputy Superintendent for Business and Finance Mark Sansucci. May I have a motion in a second that the change orders as described above be approved? Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed, thank you. All right, agreement with Penfield Administrative Council. We have a recommended action that the board approves the agreement between the Penfield Administrative Council, known as PAC, and the Penfield Central School District effective July 1, 2019, through June 30, 2022. May I have a, let's see. That's just the same thing. May I have a motion in a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed, thank you. Policies for second read and approval.
Sure, so pretty quickly, we have two policies up for second reading and approval, energy management and conservation, and then the regulation that goes along with that. And then school food service program, lunch and breakfast. We have not received any comments on these policies, so I'm recommending the board approve them. And just as a reminder, at our last board meeting, policy 5640, smoking and tobacco use, was sent back to the policy committee to revisit adding vaping or electronic devices, electronic cigarette devices. And this review will take place at our policy committee meeting this Thursday, May 9th.
Okay, very good. May I have a motion in a second that the policies listed above be approved as presented?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed, thank you. Okay. President's remarks. Our Monroe County School Board Association meetings, labor relations, Barbara and Lisa, anything to share?
It was a very good meeting. It was Westerande Quaid's presentation on what they're doing with, to encourage their students to look, to be educators. It was very, very well presented. As a matter of fact, two of the students that are part of the initial six were there. And I believe they're, they're juniors, or they're juniors?
Sixteen in the program for next year.
For next year, right.
And I was talking with their, their gym, it's a her, so her, yes, her name's Aunt Jim, thank you, yes.
Yeah, she's Penfield.
Because they have, they have field experience. And I was asking if it would be like sort of a win-win and would the new CTE stuff we're doing here? And she said probably, because they're able to student teach, sort of student teach. So it was really, I thought it was really interesting. And they were really, because they have such a diverse school district, they're really also trying to look at different, you know, so teachers look like students and, you know, do some modeling there and, and look at, you know, the cultural piece. And yeah, it was, it was really interesting.
One of the things that one of the girls talked about was that the program is designed because they, instead of like, say they wanted to do their, do math, instead of like being in the high school as a math mentor, they are encouraging them to do, I think it was second grade. And this one young woman said that she'd never, ever, ever thought that she would ever, ever, ever want to work with ever, ever second graders. And she now absolutely loves it, so, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's, well, great. That sounds great.
I can tell you that that program was, was presented, I believe, at, at the Human Resources Group. That's the...
Actually, I went to a conference of those.
Thank you. And I know former Superintendent Jeff Crane had brought that program in, so, so he presented to the superintendent group as well. So it's something that Penfield has been looking at, but no change yet.
I know they're looking for more partners in terms of, I guess, because they bring the, whoever, the leader out to do some training, so at certain times of the year, but it was...
And it's through a program in Colorado.
Yes, yep. And so it's a neat, I mean, the concept is really, as we continue to look down the line of a, of a national teacher shortage and really about trying to sort of grow your own. And so I think that's really, really neat. I know I was in, usually I go, I was unable to attend, but...
We signed you up for...
I heard, I've signed up for lots of presentations next year, thank you.
At least three.
No problem.
And then we had Executive Committee, John goes, Tom and I went.
Yeah.
The association approved their budget for next year.
And then we nominated...
Amy Thomas of Webster to be the Vice President next year. Mike Suffolatto's back after some illness and doing very well, attending meetings. And the annual meeting is up at Webster.
Yep.
May 23rd, so we should all let Sharon know.
Yeah, Sharon sent out an email today, right, from, or did, was it?
Becky sent it out.
It was Becky sent it out.
So maybe if everyone lets Sharon know as soon as, well, I think...
By Friday, I think.
Yeah. If we could let Sharon know maybe a little bit earlier.
It's Thursday this year, it's not a Wednesday.
It's on a Wednesday.
Okay, so that would be the 22nd.
Is it?
I don't know what day it is.
22nd, 22nd, right, okay, thanks.
Well, Sharon will send an email, encourage you to go just because you'll get a tour of their...
Yeah, the...
Oh, right, the garden.
They grow, they grow romaine lettuce with the use of fish.
Hydronics or...
Yeah, I'm not going to try to explain it. I've been on a tour, but you should go. They're going to serve romaine lettuce that Webster grows.
That's good.
I'd encourage all board members to be there.
And it's up on the roof?
Is Allen coming?
No.
No, but he got toured. We, this is, we talked about this, we, Allen toured, Joey Argento, Mark Sansucci, myself. We did get the tour.
Very good.
It's a, it's a really interesting concept.
A hydroponic on top of, on the roof?
No, 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 it's, they use fish. They, they use fish that, the waste is like the fertilizer?
Got it.
Does that make sense?
A circle of life.
So you can come over and see.
I'm into it that today, okay.
So, all right, sorry.
So legislative was last Wednesday, and then talked on how we're working on a paper. There's, we have a draft paper. I brought it. It's not done. We're not meeting again, so we'll be working on this. But it's about, it's called "Public Education: The Federal Role, Support, Not Governance." And, you know, there's current issues and then needed corrections. For instance, in New York State, the now-permanent tax cap, the levy cap and revenue structures for school districts do not provide a mechanism to absorb costs associated with unfunded or underfunded legislation. And so they'd like to make those be either suggestions or, you know, cough up, you know? So, I mean, you know what I'm saying? We have to have a little levity because it gets really frustrating when you, when you get into the weeds about this. And Mark, you're better at this than I am because you let this roll off your back. But it's really, it's very irritating, you know? You see it from one end, we see it from another, and, okay, so we talked about that. We had a discussion on foundation aid and the inequities. This, this is another complicated issue, but there's inequities to different school districts depending on how they're formulating, how foundation aid gets distributed. Of course, always talking about the new flexibilities behind the tax cap. And Grease was talking about how they had a great frustration about the manpower required to file a waiver for their SRO every year. Every year, they have to fire, file this waiver, apparently. And they were saying that it would be good if they could get like a two-year or a three-year, you know, so that not every year, somebody has to go through all of that work and, and whatever. So I don't mean to say whatever, you know what I'm saying? That it's a complicated process and they have to go through it every year. And as more and more districts talk about SROs, and we've talked, you know, having the discussions on these waivers, it's just... discussions on these waivers, it's just one of those things that we as a group talked about, and maybe down the road, it's something that collectively everybody is going to have to address. So those are the things we talked about at Legislative. And then Board Presidents Committee, John, do you want to take that?
Um.
Because we talked a lot, a lot of things.
We talk, all the board presidents get together, and it's always informative, trying to share information and educate each other. And sometimes we walk away shaking our heads.
Right.
We try to help others, not, not that we're the greatest at what we do, but you learn from the comparables of everybody at the table where you stand. And we stand really well within this group along with some other districts. And there's others that the board members choose to do things differently. And they don't call on Monroe County school boards for support, which they should. They pay dues. They should call on them. And so Sherry, our executive director, and officers try to do their best to help. But it's just amazing that, just not picking on anybody, a raw example, that some school districts do not do evaluations of their superintendent. Okay, no, like.
Can you give me a list?
Yeah.
No, you cannot have that.
We're trying to get every district to do the upwards. No. But it's just things like that, that, you know, you learn about it and you walk away saying, well, thank God, we've got the group we have, and they have who they have. And, but it's all about sharing more than anything.
Right.
And educating and helping. And most everybody is open to listening and asking questions about a lot of things that we might take for granted here because, you know, maybe we've been there, done that, or whatever, but it's, it's truly beneficial.
Yeah. Yeah. There was that. No unfinished business? No new business? So may I have a motion in a second that the meeting be adjourned at 8:33 PM?
Second.
For comments, I just want to mention our upcoming meetings. Tom already mentioned about Policy Committee on Thursday. We've moved it from 1:30 to 1 o'clock.
Yep.
Okay. And the budget vote, again, budget vote and election on May 21st at the high school gym, 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM. And then our next board meeting will be May 28th at, right here at 7:00. All right. Motion in a second. We had that. Those were my comments. All those in favor? None opposed? We're done.